Here, Schaefer.
Here.
Ms. Casper.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to appoint Adam Zink, Treasurer Pro Tem in accordance with Ohio Device Code thirty-three thirteen point two-three with the absence of Treasurer Jenny Logan for the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Mr. Zink, when you're ready, will you call the roll?
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Zink.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes. Board President's comments. I'm going to defer my comments because we have a packed house of great things from students. So, Mr. Miller?
Just welcome everybody and as Mrs. Casper said, and glad that we have the return of our student and staff spotlight.
Mr. Zink, do you have any treasurer's comment?
No comments at this time.
It is now time for student and staff spotlight. Mrs. Fuller?
Evening, everyone. The increase of how we are better together can be found throughout our district, rallying together to support others, whether locally, nationally, or even internationally, is a common occurrence among Lakota students. When Todd Caulfield, a sixth-grade teacher at Cherokee Elementary School, received an email from a Child's Hope International asking for donations to assist victims of Hurricane Ida, he needed just you to turn to the school's sixth-grade ambassadors. Tonight, we are recognizing sixteen dedicated students and their teacher for our student and staff spotlight, and most of them have been able to make it tonight. So when you hear your name, could you please stand out? Lucas Argo, Aiden Baylog, Tia Care, Willie Bacon, Isaac Gardner, Sophia Hayes, Peyton Lee, Sunshine Lotta, Ian Long, Lizzie Morton, Chase Nova, Maya Patterson, Alex Reader, Lee Jane Sala, Isabella Syte, Tristan Wise, and Mr. Caulfield. So, please welcome Aiden Baylog, Lizzie Morton, and Mr. Caulfield, who are going to share more about this project.
Hi, my name is Aiden Baylog, and I'm a sixth-grade student ambassador at Cherokee Elementary. I will be talking about the donations that Cherokee made to Hurricane Ida. The families that we sent the personal hygiene products to use that now gives the families one less thing to worry about so they can worry about bigger things. The personal hygiene products that we sent were ride-wind from soap to toiletry items. These, this project was completed as a team, filled up a full truck with over five hundred items in it. This all started with Child Hope International sending an email to Mr. Caulfield, who is a sixth-grade teacher at Cherokee Elementary. Mr. Caulfield reached out to Ms. Montgomery about this to put this into action. This project was only for three days, but it was probably Cherokee's biggest project. This isn't the first time we have donated to the community. Every day, we do multiple projects. One example is Reach Avocola, we donate canned food to people in need.
Hello.
Hello. I'm Lizzie Morton, a sixth-grade student ambassador at Cherokee Elementary, and today I will be talking about Cherokee's Hurricane Ida donation project. At Cherokee, we donate all the time. In fact, last year, we donated the most for a food drive in the entire district, but it has always been small, like a food drive. This was huge. It was only three days long, but we managed to fill up an entire pickup truck, including the backseat, with donations. I know this will impact many families who have lost their homes to this hurricane. It makes me feel grateful and happy that we can help so many families who really need these items. And also, when the Child's Hope reached out to sixth-grade teacher, Mr. Caulfield, and asked if we can collect donations for Hurricane Ida, after talking to Ms. Montgomery, our principal, the plan was set into action. After three days and over five hundred donations, families who are greatly impacted by the hurricane will get a head start on a normal life.
I don't know how I can follow those two. Said it perfectly. I guess I'll just say that, moving forward, I'm really excited to work with these young leaders as we look for new projects and kind of pick their brain on what they want to do next. So another round of applause for these kids.
Does anyone have any comments?
I mean, I'll just say that, you know, well, first of all, I'm so glad to have students back at our board. So excited for y'all to be here, but just thankful for the initiative that you take, the leadership that you have in your building. These are the things that are the value-add and added plus, not just to our schools, but to our world, and it's really making an impact in our community across the world. So thank you. We appreciate you.
And thank you to Mr. Caulfield for the initiative and following through and not just getting that email, but actually taking the initiative to work with Mrs. Montgomery and making it happen for our students.
Way to go, guys. Really proud of your effort.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for being here tonight.
Well, we appreciate all that you've done, and we're so proud of you and look forward to what, like Mr. Caulfield said, what your next venture will be.
This is one of those projects that you'll remember as you get older, and so I'm very thankful for your leadership in that and for the teachers and for your principal for encouraging that and fostering that. Well done.
Mrs. Fuller, what would you like them to do?
I'd like to get a picture of the board and the seat.
Wow.
Good luck, man.
You might stand in the back so I don't close. You should get in this.
Let's look at this way first. Everybody else want to come up with a dance?
No, you're good. You're good. After almost two weeks, I get really good about.
Calling in.
I don't hate the floor and having to pick myself up.
I tell you what, you get very aware of buildings that aren't handicapped at this school.
Really?
How would you do?
We're going to go ahead and give them a minute to file out and get their little swag.
We had about twenty people.
Oh, my goodness.
Give them a minute to come in.
We had twenty. Hello.
Right.
That's what I was.
I mean, let them leave and let these guys come in.
Goodness, lots of empty seats.
Everybody's on the agenda tonight. I want to close, too.
Okay, that was fun. We have arrived at the first part of our public comment, which is anything on the agenda item. I think I have two people that would like to speak on agenda items. I just want to give a little reminder after last week's meeting that the board has to adhere to the policies that govern the board, and the policy says that each person can speak for three minutes per person per topic, which is why when someone might be in the middle of a sentence, we have to stop. It's the only way to keep it fair and to let everybody have an opportunity to speak. It would not be fair, as hard as it is, to let one person speak for five minutes and then stop somebody else at three minutes. So I just want to remind you that that's why we do that. So I have, I believe, Mrs. Bodie?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Darby Bodie from Cherrywood Lane, Westchester, Ohio. So I am, I was recently contacted by a parent who was concerned over some documents that were given inconsistently to her students. One received these documents, the other did not, from Lakota schools in regards to parent authorizations.
Mrs. Bodie, can I stop you one sec?
Yes.
Where on the agenda is this item?
Oh, it's not.
Yeah, this is the part of the public comment for agenda items, and you checked, well, you checked that you were speaking on an agenda item. So that's.
Yes.
Okay, so you want to speak the second time?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. What about you, Mr. Guy? Do you want to speak on an agenda item or the second time? And what is an agenda item? Something that's on the agenda, a topic that's on the agenda. It says here, agenda item, yes or no, and just two people checked, yes. So you want to wait till the second?
If you could.
The agenda is on board box, so.
It can go to Lakota website to find you.
Yes, it's on Lakota website every Friday before every meeting. Okay, so Butler Tech, Mrs. Schaefer?
All right, well, we have not had a meeting since our last board meeting. However, two things I wanted to make you aware of. You may have seen that the all-boards meeting was canceled, so there was some concern, so they chose to cancel that. You also may have seen that the John Gaff, the superintendent of Butler Tech, made a presentation to the Butler County Commissioners requesting twenty-four million dollars of the seventy-five million that has been awarded to Butler County. They're looking to build two new vocational school campuses, an advanced aviation training facility at the Middletown Airport, as well as an advanced manufacturing training center in Hamilton. The objective of these facilities would be to hopefully keep more students in the area and be able to advance, obviously, training opportunities for those students. They also, if these get approved, would be partnering with Miami University and providing college credits for the students that got training here. It looks like, from the original reception with the commissioners, they seem very positive, so we're hopeful that those will potentially move forward, but I'll keep you apprised of how that moves forward. But just, that was a presentation that was just made. There was an article in the Journal News on that as well, if you'd like more detail on that. So hopefully, that'll be something that'll be a good opportunity for our students and the students in our county going forward.
So any questions about Butler Tech for legislative? Mr. Miller?
Well, just a couple items. Thank you, Mrs. Casper. One, Mrs. Logan and I met today with Representative Jennifer Gross on a couple items, particularly Senate Bill Twenty-two, House Bill Two Twenty-four, and House Bill Six Oh Six. Just starting some dialogue around that. Also, related to some of those legislative pieces, we had a presentation last week from Ensign Britton on some of the pending legislation coming up, including, and I'm sure that you've heard about these, House Bill Three Twenty-two and Three Twenty-seven, and then Two Forty-four, which is one we've talked about, goes into effect October thirteenth related to vaccination status. Still getting some legal guidance about that. And then we had a whole conversation about quarantines, quarantine process, nothing new that I haven't shared with you already. So I think that was it. I have a alliance legislative meeting in the morning.
Just to hit very briefly, a few highlights. At the federal level, Congressman Davidson has introduced some legislation toward consumer finance protection, and we'll be hearing more on that coming out. At the state level, they're looking at the legislative redistricting plan. I expect that to take up a bit of time, and it will probably shake up who our representatives are. And on the local level, Westchester Township would like you to go to their website. They're putting forward a quality-of-life survey. They would really appreciate everybody's input on that. And Liberty Township is seeking public input on the Milliken Exchange project that they have in place. So you can go to both of the township's websites to get that information. Finally, the OSBA Southwest Regional Conference is October fourteenth, and will be, I think I gave the wrong date last time, it's not the seventeenth, it is the fourteenth, and I'll be asking Melissa to do some registration on that. Is anyone interested in attending besides myself?
Yeah, I will.
Michael Kelly?
Michael, though, yeah.
You say it was in person?
It is in person.
Matt and Jenny.
Is that the one at Warren County typically? Okay, I'll plan on going.
Yeah, I will as well.
Yeah.
And Matt?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll just send a note to Melissa and copy you and Jenny on that, please.
I'll make sure we get it done.
Great.
Thanks.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Administrative report. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, a couple items to discuss and share information with the board and with our audience a little bit. Let me speak to our COVID numbers as of today from the first day of school. We've had eighty-eight students positive with COVID, thirteen staff. I can send these to you, too, in a follow-up email, but just so that you know, we have had four-hundred-and-eighty-three student quarantines pre-K through twelve since the first day of school. We've had four staff quarantines, and one of the, or the main driver and reason for our masks is because we don't want our students quarantined. And wearing masks in terms of not quarantining students, we've been able to quote-unquote "save" one thousand one hundred students who would have been quarantined if they weren't masked up since the first day of school. So we are thankful for that, that our kids have been able to stay in school, not having to, or not having to cancel any activities, after-school things, sports. West soccer just got canceled for tomorrow due to the school that we're playing COVID situation, so I'm hopeful and thankful that we still get those all in for our kids. I did want to mention that.
When you send those, can you send those so they're broken down by either grade or grade band buildings?
I think I can, yes.
Okay.
I do also want to mention that you might have seen the letter that went to Governor Dewine and Dr. Vanderhoff from Warren County. As I've shared with all of you, Butler County has done something similar to hopefully shorten the quarantine time, because we know that our kids, just like last year when we participated in that same study, our kids aren't getting sick when they're quarantined, but at this point, we don't have a choice in that. And so we're hopeful that by being a pilot, that they will lower that quarantine time, just like we did last year. And so all the schools, including Butler Tech and Butler County, sent that off last Friday, so hopefully that'll help.
Did I hear that Mason's plan was approved and they started that today?
I did not hear that.
I don't know how accurate that is.
Yeah, I have not heard that.
And what's the difference in the quarantine, if we change it to?
It would be shortening the days. I believe it's down to five if they do that, so about half, but there is more testing involved, day three, day five testing. So I'm hopeful that the numbers go down and we'll be able to lighten things up even prior to getting any approval from Governor Dewine on something like this.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions for Mr. Miller?
Mr. Miller, of our four-hundred-and-eighty-three quarantines, how many of those have actually been turned out to be positive cases?
I don't know that. I don't know that number.
Do we have some way of determining that or adjusting our data collection to understand that?
Sure. But like I just mentioned a few minutes ago, we know that our kids aren't, that our quarantine aren't getting sick. That's why we're participating in this study, and that's why we participated in the study last year. It's just keeping our kids out. It's not doing much good.
And I know that you're frustrated by that as well, but I would really like to hear specific numbers on how many of those that were taken out of school are actually turning out sick after their quarantine.
Yeah, if we have it, I'll get that to you.
A couple of questions that I've received. What are we doing or what have we done in terms of our heating and ventilation system? Can you give some specifics to that?
Yeah. According to Mr. Passard, that we've updated as much as we can the filtration systems that we have and the filters that we've had. So we have addressed, I think, actually did that last, started that last year.
So have we done as much as we can on that?
Without anything extensive beyond what we have currently.
Okay. And the final question that I've gotten, and this may be information for a future meeting, but discussing, what are we doing to make our, when kids are taken out of, out of the system for however much time, what are we doing to make that a more robust system when we do remote learning for them? I'm not talking about VLO, I'm talking about those periodic, they're homesick, they're out for quarantine, whatever it is, how are we enhancing that?
So, good question. And so the answer to that is it varies by teacher and it varies by building. Not that we don't want them to do that, but we have some teachers that are able and have the capability and wherewithal to Zoom with those kids. We have some that are sending home packets, trying to keep the kids connected as much as possible. It's a little bit similar, probably a little bit better than when you have kids that are pulled out for vacations or things like that. It's still trying to keep them in the loop, but it is difficult and hard, and we saw that last year. And so we have some teachers that just depend really on the teacher, trying to keep them looped and connected. So.
Is there some?
Kids quarantine more than once. That's another issue.
Right, and that's what I hear from parents, is my children have been out for weeks and not able to do what they need to be able to do.
Right.
I guess my interest would be in enhancing that, making it consistent across the district so it isn't dependent on individual teachers. And I'd like to hear more about what we're going to try and do with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Miller? Where are we on class sizes?
I'll get that next.
Okay.
So let me pull that together, just a second. So our average class size in K-two, when you include the new kindergarten specialist that we added, the contract is twenty-four point three. Average class size, grades three through six is twenty-five point five, and right now, our two areas of concern would be third grade and endeavor, which is a little bit over twenty-seven and a half, and then Van Gordon, fourth grade, is sitting at twenty-eight point four. That's a concern, but they are out of space. And so I'm not sure what we can do there, but those are our two trigger points right now.
Are they both out of space, both?
Not endeavor, so we'll take a little look at that.
So rather than look at another classroom, have we looked at an aid in those classrooms?
We do have some conversations going on with LEA about what we can do to help that out.
Okay.
There aren't any more. So in our K-two, you're saying that's averaging twenty-four point three? Do we have any?
When you include the new K-specialist that we did this year, yes, K-two.
Okay, so do we have any outliers that are like twenty-seven or?
The outliers for the ECSs would be twenty-seven at Hopewell would be the highest.
Is that one class, twenty-seven?
You know what? Let me back off that. It's actually twenty-four. I was wrong. It's with the K-specialist. It's less than that. So with the K-specialist, there really isn't an outlier in those grades. Subject to change every day.
Are we still enrolling kids?
Yes. And we still are taking kids out of the system once we find out where they're at, which is typical for this time of year.
Right.
You happen to know how many kids we've registered since the first day of school, do you?
No, but I can get that for you.
It'd be interesting.
Yep.
And what's our current enrollment number?
We are over seventeen thousand when you include preschool. We're the most, I think, we've been since I've been here, I believe.
Any other questions on class sizes? Is that all, Mr. Miller?
I have one other item. Let me just make sure. I do want to mention this because it has come up and will come up, and we're not unique, but we are down eleven routes tomorrow for buses.
Okay.
Bus driving, and bus drivers have been getting COVID, have been getting sick. Some of them are quarantined. We do have some that are in the train pipeline, but that takes time, and so it's a concern for all districts, including us.
Matt, I'm glad you brought that up because I was actually going to bring this up under new business, just to have an informal conversation. I know you probably don't have a lot of data in front of you or whatever, but, you know, obviously, I think that we probably all know families in the district that get the dreaded text in the morning saying that their route has been canceled until further notice, and I recognize there's COVID concerns. I recognize that staffing is impossible right now when it comes to hiring support staff specifically. I guess I would just love to know, you know, is there a way that we can share, that, I don't know how to put it, can we share that burden across more families than just the specific? You know, when you have a route that's been canceled for two weeks, is there a possibility of counseling, you know, that route for two or three days, then another route for two or three days, or whatever it may be? I don't know if that's possible. I don't know if it's familiarity with the route, the training of the route, things like that, but I know that there have been, you know, families I've talked to that just feel that burden.
Yep.
And that worry about, how do I figure out for the next two weeks how I'm going to get my kids to school? And again, I get it. Like, I understand COVID and staffing, but...
Chris put out an email to me on, over the weekend, and that transportation was working on those scenarios that you just laid out and trying to make it work, because it's not just taking one and pulling it from the other, because when you do that, there are other routes that are impacted that that person has up or down that schedule. So I know that they're, I know that they're working on that, and I'll try to get some more information from Chris, but I know they've been talking about what they're going to do, and they're really frustrated, too, because, you know, they know that we need to get our kids to school.
Yeah, and then I think my other, my other question would be is that, you know, COVID's one thing, you know, we can't really control that if a driver gets COVID and we have to cancel. If it's a staffing issue and we're canceling routes because of the lack of ability to find drivers, which I don't know if has been the case.
That's part of it.
Um, is there any way we can have a conversation with Peterman? Do we still pay the full amount for our contract even though they're not servicing routes due to the lack of staffing? Do we have those conversations? Again, I get COVID. I also get lack of staffing, but at the same rate, we're paying for a certain number of routes.
That's a good point.
I think it's a conversation that we should at least be having with Peterman to ensure that we're trying to keep our service the best we can.
I agree.
We'll find out.
Yeah, that's a very good question.
Thank you.
Any other?
We don't, we do not pay for routes not performed.
Well, we don't.
We don't pay for routes not performing. Okay.
And I've also heard some feedback that it's been difficult for families to get through and get some answers in the call center for busing, so I don't know if.
I haven't heard that yet, so thank you for letting me know. Chris also said they're looking at options to rotate the two weeks and no one's out the two weeks, so.
Great, great.
Is he hiding somewhere in the room?
Sending hot bubbles my way.
Again, I mean, I think we all recognize the challenges with staffing. We see it everywhere. I think for us, though, when it comes to canceling service and transportation for that long for families, as long as the team and it sounds like you are really trying to tackle it and figure out alternative situations so the impact's not falling on the same people or the same route, it'd be, it'll help us out.
And we have the drivers, too. It's the subs that we're really struggling the most with right now, and that's how it is for teachers and aides and everything right now.
Yeah, I hear you. Thank you.
That's all I had.
Any questions? More questions? Okay. Treasurer's recommendation items. I need a motion to approve A through C. So moved. Mr. Zink, do you want to fill us in a little bit on item C, the refunding of the bond resolution?
This is, this is the refunding of the two thousand and five bond issue. Originally, I believe it was around forty-four million, and we are refunding, refinancing three-point-three million. This will lower the interest rates and obviously save tax dollars for the community.
Any questions for Mr. Zink?
I received a question asking if that would change the timeline on when that would be paid off. Is that something we can add, Mrs.?
Yeah, I'll have Jenny follow up with you on that. I believe it is. I believe we're doing a restructuring on this, but I don't want to quote you on something if I'm not exactly sure.
Thank you. And just to reiterate, on that, it's when there's a savings on the bonds that goes directly back to our taxpayers. That's not savings that goes into Lakota's pocket. It goes directly back to our.
That is correct. This is different than the general.
Thank you. Mr. Zink, can I call the roll?
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes. Excuse me. A motion to approve superintendent items A through D. I'm going to pull out E and do it separately. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Is there any discussion on A through D?
I'll have the second.
I'm not sure.
Brad, give it to Brad.
I'll take it.
I haven't, Linda, vote second.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes. I need a motion to approve item E, the settlement agreement for Dr. Mack. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Discussion or questions? Discussion or questions? No? Mr. Zink, will you call the roll, please?
Mr., Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
No.
Ms. Schaefer?
No.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Now reach the portion of the public comments where you can address the board on any topic that you would like, we will start at the top of our list with Jen Siders.
Hi. I'm Jen Siders, I live on Woody Hall Drive in Westchester. Not sure where to start, I'm not here to spot out statistics or argue about anything. We can agree to disagree about masks, freedoms, et cetera, et cetera. I'm here to tell you from firsthand sources what's going on in your schools, since you don't seem to really walk the halls or know what's going on inside the schools with the kids. You also always defer to someone else or something else, turn a blind eye or deaf ear, and you can't dispute these accounts from student and parent experiences happening right now in front of you. Did you know that in school that kids are being discriminated against and segregated, even though they have an approved exemption on file? They are being put in the back of the line, back of the class at a solo table, and made to feel like a leper, early back in eighteen sixty-four, when child of independence was told you cannot get up to get a spoon for your lunch to eat because she was unmasked, yet you sit and preach about bullying in Lakota schools? Why does the dress code only apply to students? My third grader was told on a very, very hot day, she was dressed in appropriately by wearing a tank top, not a thin spaghetti strap shirt, but a tank top, and was told that the no armpit showing rule. Yet the adult staff, specifically a vice principal in Lakota, was wearing something similar, showing her armpits. Sounds like a hypocrite. Why are politics in school advisory period, which is supposed to be like a study hall, also known as personalized training time, or as I like to call it indoctrination time? Videos are being shown that promote political agendas like LGBTQ, or at HJS where there was a slideshow that stating most Christians are homophobic and most parents are too. More politics, such as a fifth grader, I believe it was in endeavor, came home and told his parents about nine eleven recently, and he was told by his teacher that some, this horrific event happened because some people had different political beliefs, instead of leaving it to the facts, or to say, which I think y'all could agree, that nine eleven was because of evil people wanting to kill Americans. Why are parents being told they can't come to the office to pick up our kids every day if they so choose? When did that change or become a policy? Do not say it's because of safety, the locks and security in place should be, should be to keep the creeps out, not the parents. Calling Lakota inclusive as a joke is anything but inclusive. I would love for it to be all inclusive, for my kids to learn multicultural religion, et cetera, but it is so one-sided, it's ridiculous. My personal account is my kids are afraid of being told they cannot bring their Bibles to school for free reading time, and so I'd be more told that. Yet Muslim children have been provided a prayer room, how is that multicultural and inclusive? Or that last year, my second grader during VLO has at least a week of learning about Ramadan, that's great, I love it, but why during Christmas time did they not learn about Jesus or Christian beliefs and traditions? I am all for learning about other religions and I want my kids to, too. But if you're going to make it one-sided and not learn about all religions or cultures, then you need to leave it all out, keep school about school. You can sit there behind your desks in your masks and assure me that the vaccine never happened, but I would like to remind you about me when you said that the masks wouldn't happen as well. There's a paper circulating with our kids that came home with all four of mine called the Protection of People Rights Amendment. I was told by two principals that this paper is for us to opt out of your book and group photos. In paragraph B, section two, it talks about non-emergency invasive, yes, invasive physical exams.
Ms. Sider, your time is up, thank you. Oh, great, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. This is Marfata.
Karen Marfata, Hunter's Ridge Drive, Westchester Township. I've come many times now to speak in front of the school board, and we were told that we cannot call out any board member or audience member by name, yet our school board has no problem calling out parents' names in their closing comments. So, I will abide by the rules even though the school board does not, and have a few random things I'd like to say, and I'm more than sure you'll understand what I'm talking about. At the last board meeting, a mother came up to speak to you about how her daughter took her own life. She was cut off at the three-minute mark, Madam President. You continued to interrupt her, do you have no soul? Does any member of this board have any humanity or soul? This woman lost her child, there is nothing, nothing in this world that trumps that. Another two minutes, five minutes, fifteen minutes, would that have mattered to have shown this mother a level of respect she deserved? Yet not one of you had the decency, empathy, or compassion to give her the time she needed. Madam President, you stated that you weren't shown respect at the Tea Party Forum on Tuesday. You are laughable after the way you treated that grieving mother. Not one of you felt need to interrupt Madam President and tell her to give this mother her due time to speak, not one of you? Absolutely disgraceful. I am publicly calling you all out to make a public apology to this woman without any of your BS excuses. Okay, I find it extremely amusing that Madam President and the other board members up for reelection did not wear masks at the Tea Fart Party Forum this past Tuesday, especially since this board are such staunch believers in protecting everyone and following the CDC and Children's Hospital guidelines. Apparently, it is dictated by the audience in front of them, hypocrisy at its finest. Madam President, the Tea Party Forum, you stated publicly that most children don't have good role models to look up to outside of school. I would absolutely love to know where you get your assessment from, and I take offense to that statement. Are you saying that you are the moral compass of our children? Lakota, the role models for them to look up to? Should they look up to the administrators who spend their time on Ashley Madison, Tinder, Craigslist, or Match.com? Or the ones who spend their time at local bars? I'm going to be very careful what I say because there's children in this room, okay? Getting intoxicated and attempting to pick up younger girls? Or the ones who don't protect our children from physical harm because the bully's parent is a teacher or a diplomat? Or is it the ones who act to see the teachers, again, I'm going to be concerned, dressed at schoolwork meetings? Or should they model the ones who spend our money for national conferences, getting intoxicated on our dime, dancing on tables, waving things around, and in almost need to call an ambulance for alcohol poisoning? Or could it be the ones attempting to control the narrative of who is elected to this school board in November with the help of the GOP knowingly endorsing a candidate they hand-selected as a puppet? This is nothing, I could go on.
Your time is up, Mrs. Marfata.
Lakota is a place where I thought my children were well taken care of. I wouldn't trust this school system with my dog.
Karen, you're next.
Karen Choce, eighty, Foxville Drive, Westchester, Ohio. Kelly, I would like to offer some constructive criticism. Last board meeting, Alicia White bravely spoke up about her family's tragedy. You told her at three minutes, her time is up. Just so you know, every one of us would have gladly given her our time. Losing a child is possibly the worst thing any parent can go through. She deserved a hug, she deserved you to show her compassion and empathy as a mom and a role model for your, for the community. Your behavior blew me away, we all know there's rules, but sometimes the rules are not one-size-fits-all. It's not you versus us, you don't sit up there like kings and queens where you're peasants, you work for us, your lies are out of control. We don't teach CRT, um, yes, you do, it's called cultural responsive teaching. We are not allowed to address audience members, but you are. We have three minutes to speak, but you have board members going on rants for longer than three minutes. Our kids are masked all day, but you don't have to wear a mask in the community. Our meeting, one meeting is health experts that want our kids masked. Next, it's not your fault, it's the Butler County Health Department. So, which one is it? Just for your information, Butler County Health Department did not mandate, you don't have to listen to them, it's a recommendation, not a mandate. At the HB two forty-eight meeting last month, the Board of Health Director was recorded saying that they do not mandate, but this is left to the, to the local school district decision. In addition to that, if it was a mandate by the Butler County Board of Health, don't you think every single district in Butler County would have to follow it? Because they don't, some are optional, including Butler Tech, where all the county high schools filter into. So, please stop the lying and take some accountability for your decisions, and stop hiding behind your own mask, we would respect you a lot more. You have parents protesting your mask mandate, and you can't even come out and look them in this, and look them in the eye and speak to them, instead you go hide in your office, you don't deserve this position. What kind of role models are these kids exposed to? Liars, hypocrites, and ones who don't believe in parental freedoms? You're running a school on fear. Kids are terrified to kill grandmas because of your rhetoric, and teachers can't speak up and will lose their job, it's sickening, this is exactly where I'm running for school board. I won't stop and I'll make sure you're held accountable.
Sarah Webster?
Thank you, Karen. Sarah Webster, I'm six. So, there's a lot of papers to gather from out there on that table. Um, six-three-nine-nine Castle Hill Drive in Liberty Township. Um, so, that was much of what I wanted to talk to, is at the end of the last meeting, you, you made it sound like your hands were tied by the Butler County decision to make quarantining a must if you don't mask our children. So, you said it, we have to do that. So, when this, when this meeting happened, I don't know if y'all missed the meeting that happened, it was either August twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth, it happened up in Columbus. It was the Ohio House Health Committee meeting. The, what is his name, Bruce T. Vanderhoff, who is the director of the Ohio Department, who is over all one hundred and thirteen counties in our state, got up, and finally, somebody asked him the questions that he could not talk around anymore. And so, he had to admit that indeed, it was the school, school districts and superintendents that had the power and authority, that just like masking is a recommended thing, that so are, that so are quarantining. So, nobody is forced to have to quarantine.
That's staff, but we, we understand that that is a, a decision that is now made by the local school board and, and the school district.
Thank you, that's, I just think that's such an interesting decision point, the should versus the shall, and who gets that authority, that has been the essence of the, uh, public political debate on this all year, from the governor, from the President of the United States on down to a school board. All right, thank you.
So, there, there's no debate on whose choice it is, it's not Butler County, it is the school department, it is the, it is the school district, so.
My health department sent letters to our parents and said that if they did not quarantine, they would send guards to the door.
This happened last year.
Um, sometimes I think we need to be aware of what is coming out of all of our districts.
Okay, so, I'm going to ask you to stop the, the hiding and the blaming, and that we're doing this because we have to, because we don't. I could not even stomach the, the comment that you made about how many people we've saved from having to be quarantined this year. Did you miss this meeting? That's what I want to know, because it clearly states that it's not, it, it's, it's not up to the county. They can recommend all they want, but the superintendent and the board gets to make the final decision. So, please unmask our children. The distress that they are under emotionally, socially, mentally, academically, is damaging our children. Stop it. This is a virus that is affecting a couple of percents of people in the country. And we have been going through this rat race now for a year and a half. I came up to the doors of people and said, here we are again. I will stop, I hope you'll stop.
Mrs. Bodie, you're up, Mrs. Bodie, you're up.
All right, sorry about that mistake earlier, that was my fault.
That's okay.
So, Darby Bodie, seven-three-three-zero Cherrywood Lane, so I just want to, another parent spoke about this paperwork, and I wanted to bring it up as well. So, again, it was inconsistently given to some of our students, a, a mother of two, the older one received the paperwork, but the younger did not. So, according to the documents, parents will receive notify, notification for the option to opt their student out of the release of medical documents, surveys, and school records, except for qualified personnel, and that is very, a very broad spectrum in the document. It also says that they will have to sign a paper to opt out. Matt, I know you just sent me an email that it says you have twenty days, but that is not for the physical exam screening permitted or required under state law. So, the concern is, what if the parent does not receive the documents required to opt out due to inconsistency across the district? This is very worrisome for the parents. Will schools go ahead with whatever is planned because they never, the parents never, did not receive that opt out? So, if they did not receive, so, this paperwork you're saying, which after twenty, twenty days, you can opt out, you have twenty days, but this is only for, for the photography and pictures. So, we need a little bit more clarity on when we can opt out from these exams. And how does a parent opt out when there is nothing to opt out of? I think a parent called a student's school to opt out, but the staff was unaware of the option to opt out of anything because there was nothing to opt out of. So, there's just some confusion that we need to, I guess, fix. So, this fear leaves the door open for future things like COVID testing, vaccines, and other actions that require a parent's signature to opt out. So, this one says also required under state law. So, what if a vaccine is required under state law? Our parents are concerned that there is no option to opt out of a vaccine. So, this, it seems, I mean, this kind of seems like a scam, it seems backwards. I would say that when we were in school, you would, if you would like to opt in, this is the signature, please sign if you would like to opt in. And this blanket opt out is not protecting our students, and it's leaving our, our, our parents up to, up to dismissing this communication, and then is setting them up for things that they do not agree with because there's inconsistency in delivery of our documents. Okay, and then I had another question, so, if you can get, if, when the kids are tested, when the COVID test Lakota uses to decide whether or not a student is quarantined, is there consistency on the test? Daughter's entire family was quarantined based on a rapid test, and then after several days, a PCR test was negative, and so they could go back to work. So, what is that, what is that, the test? Thank you.
Sheridan LeJoy?
Hello, my name is Sheridan LeJoy, I live on Ambleside Drive in Westchester, Ohio, and I have two children, both of which attended and graduated from Lakota schools. In recent months, I have participated in two group learning activities exploring racial reconciliation. The first of these was a community discussion, including several community leaders from Butler County, titled Living Undivided. The second is an ongoing focus group at my church, which is exploring a faith-based approach to building bridges for racial reconciliation. In both studies, we began with an honest look at the history of slavery and other events pertaining to racial discrimination in our country's past and present. Over and over, I heard participants comment that they felt betrayed and cheated by the education they had received, because these factual accounts from America's history, such as the burning of Black Wall Street in Tulsa and the practice of redlining, were never addressed by their school curriculum. Our children look to us as parents, grandparents, teachers, and community leaders to be honest educators. We carry a sacred trust to impart the whole truth, because this generation of students will shape the future of our nation. When we are selective in what we teach, and when we stifle open discourse, we betray that trust, diminish intellectual growth, and hamper the development of critical thinking skills. The Ohio Legislature is currently considering two bills targeting our schools, House Bill three twenty-two and House Bill three twenty-seven. Both of these bills, with their vague reference to divisive concepts and their prohibitions against giving course credit, will discourage the free and open exchange of ideas, as well as an honest examination of our country's past and current journey. They are the beginnings of fear-mongering and totalitarian censorship, pure and simple. If there is to be racial reconciliation and healing in our land, the education we provide must be fully and honestly grounded in the whole truth about what has gone before and what we see today, both the good and the glorious, as well as the bad and the ugly. If we silence age-appropriate debate in our schools about current events, civil and human rights, and past and present sources of inequality and division in our society, we are dummying down education and suppressing the goal of preparing students to be informed participants in our democracy. As a person of faith. As a person of faith, I follow the teachings of Jesus who said, "Know the truth and the truth will set you free." I hope that this school board will embrace that advice and take action to oppose these bills. Thank you.
Is it Cheryl? Thank you.
Hello. My name is Cheryl Bicknell. I live at 10049 Pinewood Lane. This is my second time to address the board about the presence of critical race theory in Lakota schools. The last time Mr. Miller asked me if I would give him a copy of my research, to which I agreed and I decided to share the research with all of you. My evidence of the presence of CRT in this school system is as follows. Lakota promotes their diversity, inclusion and equity, all tenants and buzzwords for critical race theory. Teaching about diversity, equity and inclusion builds the basic framework for CRT. At the January board meeting, Elgin Carr gleefully boasted that inclusion groups were in all of the buildings. He stated there were two books that freshmen could choose for a mandatory history class. Both of them centered on racism and were written by black men on their perspective of racism. He even said, and I quote, "These are not really history books," end quote. Three quote references are made by Mr. Carr and others that teaching tolerance is used. Teaching tolerance takes its teachings from the critical race theory. Listening to Elgin Carr's presentation, I started to pick up the nuances that were supporting CRT, again, equity, inclusion and diversity, all tenants of CRT. He bragged about how we have diversity education in the lower grades. At first, that sounds all well and good, but remember diversity is one of the first tenants or basic principles of CRT. Elgin said again, and I quote, "One person at a time, things can change," end quote. That is why we find ourselves in the situation we are in. CRT is very subtle and it is here before most people realize it. Mr. O'Connor pointed out to Elgin that many teachers have called her, voicing their concerns of political bias, not agreeing with the material and that they're concerned to not being heard. Elgin voiced no responsibility for the comment, glazing over saying, "Well, we're always going to find some that don't agree." The book stamped as widely promoted and used as a reference in this school system. For those of you not familiar with it, again, this book promotes the basic pillars of critical race theory. CRT is like an insidious disease. It comes on slowly. It seems like there's nothing to be concerned about until the basic teachings are in place. My opinion, based on what I've presented, is that the basic pillars are being put in place. The progression of these teachings will result in further division, more racism and more pitting people against one another. It will eventually remove all the incentives and motivation for our kids to succeed.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connor. Mr. O'Connor. Thank you. Alex Argo.
Hi, I'm Alex Argo, Coach Osway, Liberty Township, Ohio. So we all know that kids learn and retain information better when they are given real world examples, especially when they can apply what they are taught to their everyday life. Unfortunately, teachers have been facing a lot of intimidation lately, both here in Lakota and around the country. I was talking to some teachers recently and I know one who teaches a unit on elections. They used to present issues along with arguments on both sides in upcoming elections and moderate student discussions on them. They have since scaled back this unit to a more procedural look into how elections work due to the hyper partisan nature of the world we live in today. A math teacher I know has a unit on exponents and sees data from state and local COVID numbers all the time that perfectly illustrate concepts she is teaching. Take a look at quarantine numbers for districts who don't require masks if you're curious for just one example. She doesn't use these examples in her classroom because she's aware of how politicized this data has become. To make things worse, there are two bills in our state legislature right now, House Bills 322 and 327, that ban, quote, divisive concepts from being taught in school, mostly centered around racism, sexism, oppression, current events and more. They have harsh penalties ranging from school district funding freezes to license or suspensions for teachers, principals, and even superintendents and can all come down to how students or parents interpret things or how they're being taught. In Texas, where similar bills have already passed, we're already seeing school districts remove entire classes from their curriculum and they're grappling with how to deal with contradictions like not being able to discuss racism, but also being required to teach about Martin Luther King Jr. I really hope that my kids don't end up getting taught that MLK was just some dude who gave a speech about a dream he had in the 60s. We need honesty in education and need to teach the good along with the bad. Otherwise, we won't learn from mistakes we made in the past. Teachers present kids the factual information, how to process that information and how to apply it to their life and form their own opinions. These bills will put a stop to even factual information from being presented and give students a very cherry picked view of history. On a related note, at a recent Tea Party meeting, State Senator Lane, uh, stated he'd been collaborating with Mrs. O'Connor on a critical race theory bill. It was supposedly ready to go two weeks ago, but Ms. Mrs. O'Connor provided some crucial feedback about exactly how to word things, which I know we struggled with at these meetings. I assume this was part of her role on the board's legislative committee and I just wanted to get an update from the board on what the contents of this Ohio Senate bill on CRT are and how it will affect our student, teachers and administration. Is this bill something the school board will be endorsing? Uh, any other information would be appreciated. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
Ron Ayored, 6563 Trailview Court. I'm here at 76 and I'm a former school principal. And I have addressed a letter to President Kelly Casper and I would like to read that letter. I tried to solve, I didn't want to bring it up at this meeting because I think these meetings should be focused about educating our children like they were when I brought my children out here in the 70s, 80s. I was told that my son wouldn't read by a teacher in Cincinnati. So we moved out here and Dan Sholl and that school did, my son is reading. He's not only doing that, he's translating engineers' gibberish to something that you and I can read. But let me read the letter to President Kelly Casper respectfully. And I thank all the board members for allowing me to speak. Oh, you've served in one capacity or another for Koda for a long time and I sincerely appreciate that. Thanks to Lakota, as it was in the 70s and 80s, my son and daughter were well-served by our schools. You may even have taught them. I don't know. And I would suggest you take your hand away from your mask because that makes your mask very ineffective and collusive. Now I can't understand you because I've got hearing aids. The Lakota schools are not what it used to, the Lakota schools are not what they used to be. The quality of teachers and administrators has declined since then. And contrary to what you said the other night at the Tea Party meeting, they cannot be relied on as much as you indicated. Matt Miller is not a CEO. She'd be making a lot more money. The treasurer is good, but she's not a CFO. Board members must use outside professionals to evaluate their performance. That could be the North Central or any other organizations. The two of them are doing a reasonable job, but with good board leadership, they could be doing even more. The same is true of board members and officers. They must be trained to do their job by organizations like the School Board Association, which we're paying money to, to do it. The president must be trained to follow Robert's Rules of Order to keep the meeting on focus. She needs help from administrators to increase your credibility and not turning the board into a yes board that accomplishes little of significance. And I've been watching meetings this year and you haven't addressed things of significance. I have attended morning, morning board meetings and I don't see anything, I don't see any leadership from the president. Your last meeting was the worst school board meeting I've witnessed in my entire career. And I've attended Cincinnati Public School.
Mr. Allen, your time is up. I'm sorry.
I have, I have two minutes and I timed it. Okay?
Wait, he, Mr. Zink is times it and he just timed it at three minutes.
I, I, I'll, can I conclude with one paragraph?
No, you can't because I, I will be getting yelled at from the next meeting for letting you finish your statement.
I asked the board to.
I apologize, but you're going to have to.
To replace the current president.
Can you please sit down?
Thank you.
That's everybody.
Some other people that would like to speak, can you change the sign up on the list?
Mr. Zink, where are we on our 30 minutes?
We've got about 30 seconds left.
We are, we are at the end of our 30 minutes. 30 minutes. Yes. He just. He's keeping time. It has been 30 minutes, sir. Yes, he's keeping time.
I'll make a motion to extend our public speaking by 10 minutes.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Mr. Mr. Zink, will you call the.
Hey, please let us conduct business. Thank you.
Mr. Zink, will you call the roll, please? There's a motion.
Yes. Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Zink, are you keeping 10 minutes time?
Yeah, 10 minutes.
Yeah, this gentleman right here, because he's got his hand up. If you'd like, and then go ahead and line up and whether we can get in 10 minutes, we'll get in 10 minutes.
My name's Brad Bell and I live at, in Liberty Township at 61434.
Could you repeat your name? I'm sorry.
Brad Bell. I'm a 1991 Lakota graduate, uh, high school graduate and a University of Cincinnati graduate who studied mechanical engineering. Worked in greater Cincinnati for over 28 years in material handling industry. I have a son who's a junior at Lakota West High School currently, and who had started in the district since kindergarten. So I'm advocating on his behalf. The other reason why I'm speaking today is to allow my voice to be heard in person and to get a response from this board since my email to the superintendent and all board members fell silent last month after the last meeting. It's also to show how your mandate for masks this school year and the reasons for the mandate doesn't even align with new structure set up in our schools this year as it relates to the number of classes in a day and how many students are moving through our hallways in a day. Watched the August 5th school board meeting online and I was in attendance at the school board meeting, uh, on August, on August 23rd and heard both sides of the issue over mask mandates. I'm going to take a different turn for this than, than the rest of everybody has, has spoken prior to me. While I'm not a proponent for mandating masks nor listening, uh, nor after listening to Mr. Miller's comments at the end of the last meeting, I do not think Lakota will change the mask mandate. So I want to focus on what I can do to make Lakota a better experience for learning for our kids. I do have a really good suggestion that relates to the safety of moving around in our schools and what also further the learning environment for our students, at least at the junior high and high school levels. This may not be practical for elementary and early childhood students. So my suggestion is Lakota go back to block scheduling. Instead of individual and every day now seven periods within the high school of classes, this would lessen the foot traffic through our buildings and the number of potential viral contacts that we're all so scared of. Also, the block scheduling style rotation of classes allows junior high and high school students to get accustomed to the way scheduling is done in most colleges as well. As a college graduate, I can tell you students do not go through seven classes every day. They have a rotation of three to four classes, Monday, Wednesday and Friday and other classes or labs on Tuesdays and Thursdays typically. Block style learning also allows greater concentration and focus on subjects instead of shorter class times and a whole lot more classes changing throughout the day. I saw my student who has ADHD, is on medication for it and also has a 504 plan within Lakota, excel through this style of scheduling last year. In fact, he, uh, I lost my place here. That's, uh, as opposed to the style that Lakota has switched back to this school year. He struggles with focus and concentration in class, but actually made the Lakota honor roll last quarter and that was under block style scheduling. Uh, I could be complaining about masks and how they are a distraction to my son and is focused. I'm concentrating on how Lakota could prepare students for college and enhance individual student learning.
I get it, but we extended 10 minutes out of grace to the group. We need to give respect to those that want to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Erin Allman, uh, 5645 Yankee Road in Liberty Township. Does it seem possible that the reason the kids exposed, uh, and then not getting sick, you know, and being quarantined, maybe they're not getting sick because of natural immunities? Have we thought about that? I would love to put it to the board and ask them, how many people have gotten COVID twice? And had a, you know, had to be out twice. Other thing, I understand that your justification of masks is to prevent the quarantines. You're taking that choice away from me. If I want my kids not to be quarantined because they're sitting next to someone, I send them to school in a mask. Instead, you guys think you guys can make that decision for me? Are you guys going to get the shots? Are you guys going to make all my decisions for me? Are you guys better parents than me? Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Vicki Rasnick. I live on Porson Lane in Liberty Township. I didn't come prepared to speak, so excuse me and I'm nervous. So, um, I'll give you a little background. I have a daughter who's gone through Lakota and a son currently in Lakota and I'm an employee of Lakota. So, um, last week, my son had stuckey nose, runny nose, coughing. He does this every year. He has allergies. Twice last year, he was out a couple of days, had to be tested for COVID. It was negative. This time around, we went and they thought maybe he had strep, so they tested him for strep. The rapid was negative. They tested him for COVID and that rapid came back positive. So I had to leave work. I had to take vacation, or I'm sorry, sick leave days that I've lost now. My son, I insisted they do the PCR test and on Thursday, his pediatrician called me. I'm sorry. I'm so nervous. His pediatrician called me and said, "I don't even know what to do with this inflammation, but he is negative for COVID. The PCR is the gold standard. We are trusting the rapid testing too much." So my children have both been susceptible for, for strep. More than one time in their lives, they have both tested negative on the rapid. They called me later and say it's positive. Because his pediatrician was so concerned that he had COVID, she threw away his rapid or his test for strep, didn't even send it away to be tested further. So he was out again today because he still has this runny nose, sore throat. Took him back to the doctor today. They had to do another strep to send it away to be cultured. He has two holes in his heart. He will not be getting the vaccine because I'm not putting that in my child when it is something that is known to be causing inflammation of the heart. It is a danger for him. It is a danger to not treat strep and they didn't even finish really looking at my child because they were so concerned with a negative COVID test. I think we need to reevaluate how much trust we're putting in these tests. And my quick question is, on the point of transparency, every letter we get from his school that says there's been a COVID positive test and they're doing this in the, uh, to be transparent. I contacted the school nurse. Did they contact the persons that my son was next to? They made quarantine and tell them, in fact, he was negative? You didn't need to quarantine. I reached out to the school nurse. She didn't give me a good answer on it. She approached it from the point like she thought I was worried that people were going to, uh, know my son had COVID. So I've re emailed her. I don't have the answer, but I want to know. When those tests happened, like someone else mentioned, are they contacting you? Are you removing that? And the nurse said that you would make adjustments on the dashboard. That means they will just count one less, but nobody in the community knows. Hey, maybe these aren't really all truly positive COVID tests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justice Jesse, Justice Lane. Again, I sent you guys an email last night. I apologize for how poorly that first paragraph was, but, you know, I was going through withdrawal from Saturday and I appreciate you not texting me and rubbing it in on me. But that's not why I came up here to speak tonight. You've repeated, um, multiple times this evening that you have to follow board policies. You've repeated multiple times this evening that you have to follow board policies. Now, last year, Mr. Lovell, I've sent an email into the school district and I believe he committed a board policy P zero, PO zero one two three, blah, 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 recognize that individual board members have no authority to speak or act for the board. I believe Mr. Lovell had spoken before he talked to any of you about Mr. Parnell's departure because his explanation was legal told him to do it, but again, legal works for you guys, not for us. And I never received any answers to the questions that I asked that evening because it was red, because that's when we were doing everything home. And I believe Mr. Lovell actually read the letter and then proceeded to rip it up and blah, blah, blah. So I just kind of want to know, who actually has to follow rules, the, you know, the policies of the district? You know, if we don't see the leadership following, why should we be expected when someone gets up here and wants to talk ten extra seconds or something? Thank you.
Seconds.
Um, ten minutes.
Oh, thanks, thank you. My name is Pamela Jones, ninety-two thirty-eight Pilgrim Court in Westchester. I have a question about Constitution Day and what Lakota plans to do to fulfill the law about this, that every school needs to have some, some kind of celebration for that day and I haven't heard what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty seconds.
My only have twenty seconds, just in a hurry. Do you want me to get the, in the next comment section?
This is the last comment section.
Okay, yeah, there we go. So I came up and I'm actually, I'm impressed with Ms. O'Connor actually not wearing a mask, I think the mask shit is so dumb.
Now, your time is up.
Well, Brown University put out a study, twenty-two percent decline in IQ between kids, that means if your kid has an IQ of eighty to a hundred.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-two degrees, they'll be legally retarded, legally retarded from masks.
Not so correct term, and I think we're out of time.
That's the problem, it's the PC.
We are, thank you.
Thank you.
You'll see, you'll be seeing more of us and these, we welcome you back at the next public comment section. These meetings are gonna get more. We welcome you back.
I didn't hear it, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, sorry. Do you want to address first the ODH thing?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just hit a couple of the comments, some of them were just comments and I, but some of the questions that came up. I do want to address something that came up last time that I think our first Ms. Siders mentioned about kids that weren't wearing masks being treated differently. I mean, as soon as I heard about that, I sent a communication out to principals, I think most of that has stopped, if not all, but I think we still might have one issue with that, but again, we're not perfect and as things come up and we find out about it, we're trying to make it better. In terms of a student reading a Bible at free reading time, I don't have any problem with that and I never have and I've said that before, I think that's a good idea. In terms of Ms. White speaking, I think all the people up here knew how heart wrenching and hard that was for her and it was really difficult and we do all up here sympathize with what she and her family have been going through and continue to go through and that's, that's a difficult thing. Mrs. Body, in terms of the email that I sent you, I think most of it is there, but probably the quickest and easiest way for this parent is just to have them give me a call or email me. That's usually, we don't, you have to wait to a board meeting or something like that to take care of things when they come up. I also want to talk about quarantines in that clip I had seen, but there is legal, quarantines are lawful orders, not recommendations. The board gets to make the decision about masks or not masks, but if you look at the ODH guidance that actually came out after that clip, it's there. Actually, and also, let's see. Mr. Allard, this board tonight was not a consensus, he was not a five oh vote on everything, so it's not always a yes for, I just want to make mention of that. In terms of, thank you for your comments about block scheduling, something like that's helpful, we can work with. As much as you like block scheduling, some people didn't like having it all last year, that's come up, so we're trying to, yeah, we're trying to be more responsive and receptive to that, so I hear you and I found your email, but as I mentioned at last meeting, that I honestly don't have reasonable amount of time to answer all of them, so. But I appreciate your suggestion because that's something that we might go do something with, so thank you. Just make sure. I would, I'll be for you. I think that's, I think that's it.
Can, yeah, go ahead. Is there anything that we're doing, I can't think of the mom's name, that if somebody gets a false test and we've already got.
Yeah, we do, we do let the people know that if, if they're quarantined and it comes out that it was a a false positive, false negative, that we do let them know, but it has happened and they can come to school right away.
Right.
Yeah.
Probably take them out of quarantine.
Correct.
And Constitution Day? Constitution Day?
Constitution Day?
You know, I'll find out, we've always honored that day and respected it, I'm sure we will again this year.
Is that not different within each building?
Uh, yeah, but we do celebrate it and we've always, we've always done that, even before it was a law, quite honestly, so.
The forms that Mrs. Bodie was referencing, those are sent out to all families and all parents?
Correct, but I'll find out, that's why we need to talk to the parent that brought the question.
And they're just, is it just opting out of group photos?
There's some other things and I can forward you all the information because there was more pictures than the ones that she brought.
Well, and we also went to electronic.
That's right.
We went to electronic forms this year, so I think there's also that.
Yeah, not all of those are up yet, electronic, but they will be for next year.
I was, I was going to ask the same thing because I know that for my children or for my child, all the forms were electronic this year, so it was right in front of me in my email.
And, and none of those, the out, out, none of that information is anything new and it's everything that the other district goes to.
Yeah, I was saying, I get it every year, I know we.
I think the point about if it doesn't require a parent's signature though, then how do we assure that everyone has received it?
But again, I think that the electronic, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Because it logs into your one login account and it goes through email, so it's all secure and it comes straight to the individual parent who's in our system through registration.
We have about ten parents in the district that have opted out.
For those ten, that's important though.
Absolutely.
Of seventeen thousand.
Absolutely.
All right.
Real quickly, I would like to address the fact that I don't believe Mrs. Moffett, I said there are no good role models, I said all children don't have role models. However, again, we feel for the people to come to the microphone and speak. However, earlier this year, we were sued for not following procedures, cost the district about fifteen thousand dollars. We have policies in place for a reason, if there wasn't a three minute limit, people could go on for ten minutes. It would be fair for you to speak for ten minutes and no one else to get to speak for one minute. I'm only up here and adhering to the policies. Mr. Allard, I responded to your email with the reasons that we do what we do policy wise. I'm a human being, I'm certainly not perfect, but we are up here doing the best job that we can and I'm here to follow the policies and the guidelines. That's all I have to say. Does anybody have any other comments for the?
My, my only suggestion would be for us not to have the executive session tonight just because Mrs. Logan's not here and she.
Yes, I was just gonna say, we're gonna table the executive session because it was Mrs. Logan was leading the executive session, so we will table that for another meeting, so that moves us on to closing comments. And Mr. Miller, we can start with you.
I'm, I'm good, I think I've said enough.
Mr. Zink, do you have anything?
I just know Ms. Logan wanted to apologize for not being able to make it tonight, it was a surprise that happened right there at the end of the night, so.
Sometimes those emergencies come up. Mr. Pearl?
Just congratulations, I was able to go to the East and West football games over the last couple Fridays and the athletic workers did a great job on their future Hawks and future Firebirds. Wonderful, wonderful event, was great to see all the kids having a good time and the staff, they did a great job, so that's it.
Yeah, they did a nice job. Mrs. O'Connor?
Thank you. First and foremost, what we do is about our students and I want to congratulate our students from Cherokee that did the Ida Food Drive, that's terrific with their initiative and a staff member willing to take the time to assist them through that project, so I appreciate that. I did take the time after last week's or last month's meeting, I guess it was, to call Mrs. White after she appeared at the board meeting and we had a a really good extended conversation and I want to say thank you for her taking time to talk to me about the mental health issues that she had seen and what she was doing as a parent who had lost a child to try to address those. And I did extend sympathy to her for her family's loss as well. And I think we all feel very strongly about the loss of a child is not something that's even imaginable, so I did want you to know that Mrs. White was contacted. Finally, with the board's indulgence, I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to address a letter. This letter was sent by a parent, her name is Mrs. Antoinette Brokop, and she sent it to the board and superintendent on Saturday addressing what she regards as poor behavior on my part. As I'm accountable back to my community and her letter was made public record by sending it to the board and to the superintendent and she posted it on social media. I think my response needs to be public as well, so please bear with me for a moment. Mrs. Brokop, thank you for your letter to the board. Thank you for the concern you've expressed regarding my not wearing a mask and my personal medical health situation. That is the point though, isn't it? It's my personal medical situation. I don't think it's appropriate to demand and discuss someone's medical information in a board forum in public or on social media. Would you be comfortable having your private health information publicly discussed? To the best of my knowledge, HIPAA laws are still in effect. For the record, my conscience is clear and I unequivocally disagree with your meritless mischaracterization and assumptions that have no foundation in fact. I've heard that there were calls for me to be physically escorted from the building simply for not wearing a mask. There's some that believe, as you seem to, that I should remain in my home behind a computer screen, that I shouldn't be allowed to attend in-person meetings and that I should be secluded and live my life virtually. Perhaps you also believe that I shouldn't go to the grocery store or to church or to other public functions. The fact is though, that I was elected by my community to represent them, to be engaged, to be accessible and present. And that's what I've done for nearly fourteen years. There are people that are angered that I provided an online link to Lakota's mask exemption form for parents because they couldn't easily locate that on the Lakota website. Helping parents navigate their way through our system is the job that I was elected as well as my fellow board members to perform. And by the way, had a form been required to wear a mask, I would have provided that as well. Sadly, there are small nests of individuals within our community that don't have the courage or the maturity to speak in person to others about areas of disagreement. Please, instead of sniping from behind a keyboard, take the time to reach out and talk to me directly. I'll listen. We may in the end and probably will end up agreeing to disagree, but at least we could try to reach that point through a respectful and an adult process. In a sense, I appreciate that through your letter, the rock's been turned over to see what some people believe. I'm a grown woman, there are plenty of slings and arrows in my time of public service. However, recent adult actions and opinions that I've witnessed have frankly left me dismayed and disappointed at what we've come to as a community. Take a moment to try to imagine what an unmasked child is made to feel like when these kind of comments are made to and about them. What could be seen as discriminatory behavior has already happened this year in a few of our classrooms over the mask mandate and the mask exemptions. Mr. Miller, our superintendent, has acted swiftly to correct those situations once he was made aware. And he stated that these situations should not be happening in our schools and they shouldn't. Some feel that an unmasked child should sit by themselves, away from their classmates. Some feel that a child without a mask should be singled out, seated alone in the back of the bus, forced to the back of the line every time their class leaves their classroom. Some may feel that maskless children should stay home in the virtual learning option. That those children don't have the right to be in person or in our school buildings and that their families don't have the right to choose the best educational option for their child. So I have to ask this. Do we take a child in a wheelchair and seat them alone? Do we take a child with a skin color that's not the same as our own and separate them from their classmates? Do we take a child or an adult with any health condition or any other circumstance, call for them to be bodily escorted out of the building, moved to the back of the room or moved to the back of the bus? We don't. And I think you, Mrs. Brokop, would be among the first to protest that treatment, as would I, as would all of us. I thought a lot recently about the impact of witnessing negative judgmental behavior and what that can do to children. Incidents like this for me show the power of learned behavior. And that applies, by the way, on all sides of the issues and behavior that we're seeing in the public arena these days, we can do better. Children seeing divisive and non-inclusive behavior at home may learn that it's okay to treat other children the same way, to judge without regard to fact and without respect for their fellow human beings. I believe that adults should make their own private health and medical decisions, make those decisions for their children in consultation with their healthcare providers, that it's a parental choice. And I believe that those decisions should be respected with regard to privacy and individual choice. Mrs. Brokop, thank you again for your communication with the board.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Thank you, yeah, I think there were, I think there were lots of, lots of errors thrown this evening. And we certainly can do better to treat one another with dignity and respect. And I hope that that will continue to improve. I'll leave that there, it was certainly nice to see the students and Mr. Caulfield here this evening. Appreciate their work for those who are less fortunate.
Mr. Lovell?
Yeah, thanks. Just a shout out, I, it's been, gosh, how many weeks are we in now, three? Four? What are we at, I don't even know anymore. Just a shout out, I was, you know, I get the opportunity rarely, but I get the opportunity to get down to the bus stop to get my daughter off the bus and we were one of the lucky ones to have bus. But I, just the excitement, I get it, you know, I always say that sometimes what we tackle up here are adult problems, not kid problems, but if you get down to the kid problems, like the reality is, is that things are going really well, seventeen thousand kids, the highest enrollment we've had since you've been here, which is speaking to people still desiring to live in this community. Hundred thousand residents, I say it all the time, nearly two thousand staff, it's hard, it's challenging every day, lots going on, but I'll tell you what, when I go down to the bus stop and I see those smiling kids get off the bus and I have to remind my daughter, and we all do, as we walk down to the call to Zach, hey, T, you could take your mask off, right? But, but I just say that because so many things are going right in our schools every single day and there was a comment I love when people leave when I start talking. But you know what I, what I, what I, somebody had mentioned, you know, we don't get into the schools and we do, we do. And we get out and we get to see the awesome things that are happening, we get to invite our students here and I'll tell you what, it makes me proud. It makes me proud, it makes me proud of the administrators we have, the teachers we have. You know, I personally, I know that we have Mrs. O'Connor, Mrs. Casper and Mr. Pearl have graduates of the district, we're lucky enough to still see the fruits of what's going on and the growth that they make every day and I know that there are seventeen thousand other kids that are experiencing that growth too and so I don't say all that to minimize the impact of what we're talking and the, the hard things we have to tackle because we do. They're hard conversations and nobody's perfect like Ms. Casper said, but I just try to make sure that we all take a step back and take a breath and just remember that every single day we have students walking into our doors and teachers walking to the doors loving life and loving what they're doing. And that's what it's all about, we're about teaching and learning. And this community is about being a strong community, two townships, but rallying around one school system. I know that we hear often that so goes Lakota, so goes our townships. Right? And, and the meaning behind that is strong schools are truly the foundation and so I just ask, we can agree, we can disagree, we can be passionate about things, and I know many of you that are passionate are stepping up and running for the board, well done. That's what it's about, right? If you're that passionate about your cause, step up, run for the board and if the community thinks that you're the people to be up here, rock on, you do it, right? But I say that because our disagreements have to end at a certain point because what we're here for. we're here for is strong thriving schools and to support this administration, these teachers. And so again, might have disagreements about that, but ultimately it's about those smiling faces that get off the bus every day and I know I've said this multiple times, but it's about the five of us and our administrators that stand up on that stage of graduation and see those graduate walks out, hear how many scholarships are taken, how many kids are going to the military, how many kids are going into labor force and how many kids are going to college. That right there is the finish line for us and that's what we need to be focused on right now and we're not. We're not focused on it. We're fight focused on hyper political things and so that, this is my opportunity, thank you. And so that's what we're focused on and so I just want to make sure that we keep being aligned to what the goal is and what we need to do and I'm just thankful to administration for in the midst of everything moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lovell. Again, I would like to just echo my fellow board members on the excitement of seeing the 17 students and their parents and grandparents. I hope we get to see more of that going forward. It's nice to bring the student and staff spotlight. I would also like to echo Mrs. O'Connor that says that the out of control on both sides is really what's stopping us from doing what we were elected to do and that at some point we do have to get back to the business of educating our children. That's all I have. So I, at this point, I would like to call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Zink, when you're ready.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.